Good afternoon. Welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for Tuesday, July the 5th. I will note that Councilmember Thompson is unable to attend tonight and is excused, but all other members of the council are present. The first item on our agenda today is to review the agenda we have for tonight's council meeting, and then again also the agenda for the July 11th meeting. Just to remind everyone, we have back-to-back council meetings tonight and then next Monday on the 11th before the break for the remainder of the month. So, let's begin by looking at the agenda for tonight's meeting. I know we just went over this on Thursday, so probably most of our questions have already been answered, but council, anything else you'd like any additional information on regarding tonight's agenda? Right now, I don't think we have anything off of consent because the zoning case has been continued till next Monday. There are -- we'll have plenty to talk about when we shift to next to the July 11th meeting, but before we do that, is there anything related to tonight's meeting you want to discuss? All right. Let's move then to the July 11th meeting, which will be obviously next Monday. Mr. Brady, I know there's some items on here that really are high-profile items that we need to at least comment on or talk a little bit about. Is there anything specifically you'd like staff to give us a presentation on?
There are a couple of items, Mayor. Let me just see if I can do them in the right order here. We do have a presentation on the items -- well, I won't take them necessarily in order, but we will have a presentation for a study session on the new leaf. We can do that available. That's already posted for this study session, but it's on the agenda for the 11th. There's also, I thought it might be helpful to have, it's a minor dollar amount on the agenda for water use it wisely, but just because taking the opportunity to continue to talk about water conservation, we do have a presentation on that. That's item 5C?
Okay, so before we get too far away, we do have on the agenda for today's study session, the presentation about the new leaf issues, and so--
We can come back--
--that's for approval next Monday, but so we'll just note that it's on the calendar for next Monday, but we'll talk about it here with the staff presentation after we review the agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
So otherwise, we have a presentation for water use it wisely. We can also give you a briefing on the license agreement for this studio. And also, we have a presentation we'd like to share with you on item 5M and 5N.
Thank you. That's one I was hoping we could hear more about.
So whatever order you want to go into, Mayor.
Why don't we start with the water use it wisely presentation?
Come on up.
Come on up. For tonight or for next Monday? Yes, that's what we're doing right now. 5C is the water use it wisely agenda item for the 11th.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mayor and council. Mr. Brady, I thought you were going to send the memo out to everybody wearing their water use it wisely shirts, but--
Apologize.
All right, thank you.
I was ahead.
Very good. So, thank you. I just wanted to briefly talk to you a little bit about the water use it wisely campaign. I'm so excited. I don't often get to talk to you about the campaign, and it has been something that's been part of Mesa since 1999. So, over 20 years, we're going strong. We started the campaign during kind of with the first whispers of drought back in actually 98 and 99. It was things were getting so serious that we opened it up regionally, and we've been regional partnership since that time, and we're very excited that it just makes sense for us to pool our funds for better buying power and to leverage it for other promotions and things like that. So, we'll get, move forward here. So, one of the things is we do have 19 partners currently that participate and contribute funds. Really excited this year. We've been courting them for some time now, but Tucson is joining the partnership for this fiscal year. So, very excited about that, and so is Yuma. So, we've got some partners that are going to be outside the valley with us this year. We do a lot of highly targeted traditional media that we try to really find, you know, what those audiences might be. We have a great track record with our website and the kids pages, so we do promote through Bare Essentials News for kids. There's things like Green Living Magazine where we know there's, you know, some of the other people who appreciate this type of messaging and will help spread that messaging. And then things like Arizona Capital Times because we want our legislators to also be seeing that we're out there and doing things. We have things like the hardware store signage that we did recently this past year in both hardware stores and a few Home Depots and Lowe's. So, it's like at that point of sale that it's great to have that messaging out there for consumers. Some other targeted traditional media, things like billboards. We did that for the first time in real large numbers starting last year about July. And we also do things like television PSAs. We do radio. We do talk radio like Rosie on the House and also messaging on KJZZ or NPR. We are actually going to be starting, I think it's starting today, through the campaign. We do have an NPR marketing campaign that's going to be on for about the next two weeks. So, listen for it. And then we have a great deal of online communication tactics that we use, both web and social. And, you know, it's great with the agency that we're working with, happy that they were always analyzing how things are performing, but it just is, as all of you know, it takes a lot of time and energy and effort to do social media. So, you can see some of the followers we have on our social media channels, and all of those are just, help us out a great deal. Our waterisitwisely.com is kind of our central site for all kinds of information. We do weekly blogs and all kinds of other, you know, videos. The main page is all about our 100-plus tips, and so there's just easy tips that people can follow. And then the kids pages and things like that. We get about 3,000 visits a day or nearly a million visit page views each year on our website. And then we have other great items that we can use to engage people because, you know, as we know, we can get the messages out and we can have the social media, but to really be one-on-one in person is always great. So, we have our wonderful water tower. It's showing the average use of each person each day here in the valley, 120 gallons. So, it's that display with 100 one-gallon jugs just in that pyramid, and it kind of makes the route to different partner locations. We're hoping to have it at the IDEA Museum next spring is what we're planning for. But this is an example of Queen Creek Library and how it can be interactive with library visitors. And then Wayne Drop, almost brought him today, but figured it'd be too much, but our water is a wisely mascot, and here he is at Mesa Main Library. And just, we had him at Celebrate Mesa Living Green Village, and so he always is very engaging. We do seasonal messaging as well that is specific to, you know, the time of year, so spring and fall. We have a great page that's all about just the planting and landscaping because that's where the great, the majority of water is used, and so we really emphasize those topics. But for monsoon season, we're all ready to go. We've already put a little bit of messaging out with these rains we've had, but the idea is get the message out to people to turn off their controllers or to put them to the rain setting, and we think that's going to, you know, can really provide a lot of savings if everyone, you know, kind of gets that little reminder when we get enough rain to do so. So, we've got, and this all gets shared with all the partners so that they can all use the same materials. So, you know, this is Lake Mead. We know things are, the level is historic lows. We know things are really concerning right now. We're poised and ready to go. We've got our budget of what everybody's been able to contribute this year, but if there's anybody out there, any of those listeners out there that want to, you know, sponsor or become a partner, we're open to that, and so we're ready to do more if we can get more funding, but we just are really pleased to have the campaign ready to go. As Mr. Brady mentioned, we have the IGA. I know I run those by you guys quite often to approve the IGA's, and for some of the partners, it's simpler for them to do an IGA with us instead of paying directly to the agency. So, that's why we bring those to you periodically.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I know at the end of the budget, the state budget legislative session, there was a billion dollars allocated to the issue of water, and then I heard there was some additional, maybe $100 million or so dedicated to water conservation. I believe that's mainly geared towards agricultural users--
Right.
--but is there any additional water conservation funding available to cities as a result of what happened in the last session? Do we know?
I do not know that anything has been earmarked, especially for messaging and outreach.
Ian?
Ian is thankfully here to tell us that.
So, the long story short really is, yes, there has been money set aside for conservation. You're correct, Mayor, that there's $200 million. Unfortunately, that's almost as much as we know right now, so we're still going to kind of work through those details. But obviously, in partnership with AMOAA, with our departments, we're going to pay very close attention to how that's sold out. We're hoping it's in a grant-like manner, and then we would definitely take advantage of that.
Okay. Can you then just remind me, what are the incentives that are already in place to help, you know, residential water users maybe be more engaged in water conservation, like transitioning from turf to, I mean, from grass to turf or things like that?
We have our grass to xeriscate incentive program, and it is available to residents who have grass and are willing to take that grass, remove that grass and replace it with desert plants, and they can get up to $575 for that. We have a commercial program, and I think this is something I wish more of like our HOAs or commercial properties would be able to take advantage of, not only for grass removal, but also for just improvements to their irrigation sprinkler systems and things like that. So, we will upgrade their sprinkler equipment so it's a lot more efficient, and we have incentives up to over $12,000 for that. So, call us. We're ready to talk to you. Yes.
Okay. I bet with the, just the cost of water, we can expect some phone calls. Council, questions on this? So, this is up for a vote on January, I'm sorry, July 11th at our meeting, not tonight, but a week--
It's on consent, but I just thought it was an opportunity to kind of talk about what the program does.
Great, thank you. Any questions on this item? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to, no, I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you. I love this engagement that it's regional so we can really send home the message to all of our community regardless of where you live--
Right.
--that we have that same information, and people are so hungry for how they can participate in conservation. So, I'd love that we can have a uniform message and be on the same playing field and making an impact for all our cities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Duff.
Mr. Brady, I know you mentioned agenda items 5M and N. Should we skip to that now?
We could, yes. And if there's time, we also have a presentation for 5G.
5G, okay. Well, let's, Ian, let's start with the poorly kept secret that we're talking with some big names.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity to bring some attention to these items. As you noted, we do have a couple of items on your agenda that will deal with approval of some new fiber licenses. But before we dive into those, just wanted to do a quick recap to remind everybody as to how we got here. So, for years, you as a council have really advocated for how can we as a community better provide, better enhance network connectivity across the city. It has been a priority prior to COVID, and then of course, when COVID hit and everybody had to go home, there was an increased reliance on the internet. It became even more apparent that efforts really needed to be taken to make the systems and the network more robust. We do, we do have great network and broadband connectivity throughout the city, but we did feel like there needed to be opportunities for more. And so, it was even brought up at a few of your council strategic planning sessions. You had conversations about that as recently as this year. All of that led to a request to staff to kind of really focus some research on, okay, how do we actually take action now on this? And that research led to a conversation with you in January where we kind of talked about how fiber is really the technology that we want to pursue and that we would like to see more of that specifically to help with the network connectivity in our city. Council decided to go ahead and authorize a request for information in January that was sent out nationally to do two things. It was to help us as staff kind of see what was happening nationally. Since there was more of an interest across the country, across the world in broadband, we knew that maybe there were some new ways of doing business. So, we kind of wanted to find out from providers that were out there, what they're doing and how we could take advantage of that. We also, though, wanted to let the providers know that you as a council and Mesa as a city were serious in our intentions to get additional connectivity here and to get it at a, on a pace that was faster than maybe that we had seen before. So, after a few months, we came back to you in April with the results of that RFI. We were very pleased to have received a robust response to that. We had seven providers that opted to send us some information and let us know that they were interested in looking into what they might do to help us with our goals. Because of that robust response, I think we all collectively felt that this idea of potentially picking a provider to be, to help us with this, or one provider, is not necessarily where we wanted to go. Instead, we thought the best course of action would be to really facilitate this private sector investment in our community. And so, that's kind of the approach that staff took, and that's kind of where we are today. We created this, what we're calling a fiber provider toolkit that makes it easier for these fiber companies to enter the Mesa market and then let the market really do its thing. So, real quick, three things that are part, that are essential pieces of this toolkit. We updated the license agreement, and really one of the big things that we did there is we removed regulatory requirements such as a certificate of necessity from the Arizona Corporation Commission that the Corporation Commission itself didn't actually require for these types of providers. So, that was removed. That was a big hurdle. And then there were some other tweaks there as well. We also expanded construction options for certain types of facilities that these providers would use. So, if they use, for instance, if they wanted to deploy microconduit, we would allow through the permit process, the use of microtrenching, which is actually a pretty revolutionary technique that allows these networks to be deployed at scale much quicker, much more efficiently, and much more cost-effective for the providers. It's a big benefit to our community because potentially instead of weeks of barricades and whatnot in front of your house, I mean, I've, we've seen this type of construction go across the street, you know, in a day. So, really big improvements for the public. And then finally, we also provided for additional right-of-way fee options. These providers can now opt to pursue a fee model that charges a percentage of their revenue, of their total revenue, which brings these types of providers more in line with existing right-of-way users. So, those are kind of the three big elements there. Pleased to say that at the moment on your agenda, we have two new licensees that are proposing to get a license with us. That's Google Fiber and Sci-Fi Networks. I can tell you hot off the presses that you will have a third that'll be ready for your July 11th agenda, and that is Wired. So, with those three, we will have two traditional internet service providers, those being Google Fiber and Wired, and then Sci-Fi is an open access network provider. Essentially, they are the owner and the installer of the facilities, which they then lease out to tenants like ISPs or other users that would then provide that service directly to your home or business. The benefit of this toolkit, the very cool thing about this toolkit, is it really does create though the possibility of even more providers to come. We know that there are market constraints. You can't have 10 new ISPs or network providers running by your house. The market just won't really sustain that, but where there is room, where there's market opportunity, we've really maximized that with this toolkit. So, just some quick main deal points. Every license is as uniform as possible. That was the goal to create, again, I mentioned, part of this toolkit. So, it's a uniform, easy-to-access form. They will have some minor differences, but here are some big deal points that you'll see across the licensees, licenses, excuse me. We are asking for forecasted build plans. So, these providers will give us up to three years of plans in advance, updated yearly, so we will get to have a good sense of where the providers are going. We will encourage joint construction. So, in the event that there are multiple providers that want to install new service in a particular area, we will encourage, as we do today, them to do so jointly. The licenses allow us to maintain a robust right-of-way stewardship, which is kind of a hallmark of Mesa. If you go other places, the roads don't look as good necessarily as they do here. These licenses will maintain the high quality of right-of-way that we've come to expect. And then there is an opportunity for licensees to accelerate their projects so they can work with our staff to potentially get staff dedicated to their projects. Now, just like any other development, there are additional fees for that, but those are things that they can do if they choose to accelerate their projects. So, next steps, you already know, this will be on your July 11th council agenda for consideration. One thing to note, if approved, it doesn't mean that the providers just get to go out into our community and start building. They still have to pull permits, and those permits have to be approved. So, we have to understand what they're trying to do, and the inspectors have to go out and make sure everything is as it should be. And then there will be ongoing coordination throughout the life of these projects. Some of the providers have told us that they do want to go citywide. Those projects will take years, so we will be there every step of the way, making sure that we coordinate their builds. It does provide for this opportunity for public-private partnerships, which was mentioned, I believe, last study session. There were some questions about would the city be able to potentially take advantage of some of this new fiber? The answer is absolutely yes. We will work with all of these providers to take advantage of those opportunities if they do present themselves. The last thing, I do really want to make note of the fact that there were a ton of people that helped with this initiative. Travis Cutwright, Lori Greco, our right-of-way manager, and Jack Vincent in our attorney's office, they all did tremendous work to get us to where we are, so I just really wanted to thank them and all their teams for this. That's what I got. So, any questions?
I'm sure we have some. Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Ian, for the hard work. This is fantastic. This is something that we've wanted for a long time, and I appreciate all the hard work. Is it Sci-Fi is going to be, are they going to lay dark fiber and then they'll ask ISPs to come in and then provide them the opportunity to capitalize on the fiber?
Yeah, so Mayor and Councilmember Luna, yes, absolutely. So, because they're an open access network, that's exactly right. They lay the fiber. They don't light the service themselves. They don't provide the service as Sci-Fi. So, you, if you were to use a service provider from their network, you might not even know, you probably won't even know, that you're doing so on Sci-Fi's network.
So, it's, the agreement also includes the provisions that, let's say, Google Fiber will provide a strand of fiber for government use?
Well, so Mayor and Councilmember Luna, there is the opportunity for these providers to do that. Sci-Fi has opted to do in-kind service exchange in lieu of their payment, of the per-linear foot fee payment. So, what they are proposing to provide is a number of things, up to 600-plus network nodes for us to tap into across their network, which is huge for smart city efforts, as well as a subsidy for the internet service providers, monthly bills for up to 33,000 premises. So, that's huge for closing the digital divide.
So, is there, is there collaboration with what Candace is doing with the power and electric, how we're going to be reading smart meters, if you will, by working with some of these providers?
So, Mayor and Councilmember Luna, I mean, I know Candace can chime in here, but they're pretty far along in their process and how their network is going to work in the future. At some point, the beauty of this is there will be fiber connected, you know, to every premise. So, if an opportunity does present itself to connect through a hard wire into any of these facilities, it would be there.
And it's all future-proofed?
It's future-proofed, for sure. We're talking decades, decades out, yes.
Thank you, Ian. Appreciate all your hard work.
Absolutely.
Ian, can you just define future-proofing for us? Why, I mean, why was it our, why is that the gold standard to get fiber to a house or a business, and how does that future-proof us?
Yeah, Mayor, great, great question. I love to say that to sound a little cheesy, but it's true because fiber, you know, theoretically can transmit, it transmits data as light. So theoretically, and we're not anywhere close to this, but theoretically, it can travel at the speed of light. But the, so basically, it can scale up with the technology at the endpoints, the electronics that actually push the data through. As that technology improves, as it has been even during our time conducting this research, the speeds that can go across the fiber will be able to, I should say, the fiber will be able to handle those new speeds for decades to come. So, it's also, fiber is also a lot more stable, a lot less, has a lot less chance of having interference. So, those types of reasons and plenty more are why fiber is really the gold standard. And like I said, at least for decades to come, there's not another technology on the horizon that would supersede it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Haredi.
Question on the microtrenching. What's, how does that look like? Is it on the side of the road or sidewalks or what is that process? And you mentioned it could take maybe a day in some of these neighborhoods, but what is, what does it actually look like? What's, like how deep it is?
Yeah.
And is it protected as far as, do they have to go back and if they, they get somebody that knocks it out, like how, the maintenance of it?
Yeah. So, Mayor and Councilmember Haredi, to that point, I'll address that first, absolutely. So, as I mentioned, we, one of the biggest points that we worked on in all of these deals is to make sure that our right-of-way was maintained as it is today. So, if there are any issues where something comes undone or, you know, there's a wire that wasn't buried correctly, which we all assume is going to be buried correctly, the companies that install that have to take care of that on their own dime. They have to remediate it back to the conditions that we expect, that we called out in the permit. Microtrenching itself essentially will be a two-inch-wide trench, kind of use a rock saw that cuts right in edge of curb, so it'll be as close to the concrete curb as it can get. And it can go down anywhere from six to, in some cases, 18 inches, probably more close to 12 inches, depending on the line and where it's going. And so, yeah, the process is very quick. They'll make the cut, they'll suck out the dirt, they'll lay their conduit, they'll put the flowable fill in, they'll top it off, all in a day. And I'm not talking to whole neighborhoods like Dobson Ranch that can get taken care of in a day. I should be more specific, a street--
Sure.
--you know, that maybe can. But it's a very innovative process. It's highly efficient, and there are mechanisms in place within the license to ensure that the licensees take care of the facilities and the right-of-way that they're utilizing.
Is there other infrastructure that needs, like pedestal or other items that are going to be in neighborhoods? Now, I get a couple of folks that always--
Yep.
--these damaged pedestals that they send us pictures and questions about from other utilities, but what's the other infrastructure that needs?
Yeah, so Mayor and Councilmember Haredi, that's a great question as well. So, yes, absolutely, there will be above-ground pedestals or cabinets, almost exactly like you see with the traditional broadband deployments today. I have one of those boxes in my front yard.
Sure.
You will still have those boxes every so often. Now, it's going to, it's going to vary depend on exactly the type of facilities that the individual licensees use, but they will be there. One thing just to point out, for example, is, you know, we talked about some of these boxes, depending on if they're energized, can create a bit of a noise. And so, I'm just pointing on this, but it's standard practice. We make sure that those, that the noise level does not go above our standards, right, for noise abatement. But you will see some of those. I kind of joke with folks, though, that I've started to look for these things all around, and I see them, but I ask other people, and they don't, they don't know. They just kind of blend in, and we will do our best to make sure that that's how things are done here.
And my other, my last question was, you mentioned the market being kind of the driver here. How, as a city, protect, you know, neighborhoods that might be low-income or maybe these companies might push out, laying out fiber five years from now, 10 years from now? How are we, as a city, protecting that all neighborhoods are getting fiber as it goes along, right? So, it doesn't, that it doesn't take five, 10, 15 years for folks to be getting this type of service?
Yeah. Mayor and Councilmember Haredi, another big issue that we talked to the providers with closing the digital divide, making sure that this is accessible to everybody is a prime goal. We believe, and that the market here because of the interest, that there will be that deployment. But while we are not requiring that folks go to certain locations, we are watching absolutely where they're going, and that's where that forecast comes into play. And we can see over a matter of year or two or three, if we notice that there are some gaps, we can, we can come back to these providers to talk about that. I do want to note, though, that really the only way that we can guarantee that every premise is covered is that the city invests in this. And I'm, I mean, I'm pleased to say that with all of these deployments, the city is not spending a dime to facilitate the construction other than through staff time. But it's an important goal. But it's an important goal, all these providers know that. That's why sci-fi, for example, offered up the subsidy for the providers on their network.
So, Councilmember Heredia, just to be clear, there's no guarantee in any of these agreements that requires them to provide citywide.
Sure.
Access or coverage. But we do, one of the things we believe it'll do pretty quickly is that competition will drive down pricing.
Sure.
And so, and as that happens, and as we see, as we see the rollout plan for each of those, I think in subsequent years, we can assess, as a community, as a city, do we feel like there are, maybe there are areas, like you're saying, aren't getting as fast as we'd like to, there's a need. Now, we're providing some of that, right? We have our own program to provide some of that, to fill those gaps. But then, that would become our decision, right, to enter two agreements with them, or any one of them, about trying to get that deployment accelerated, maybe more on a subsidized. But initially, we want, where our goal is to see if the competition and the private market will figure that out first, and then we can watch that and then go from there. But first, for every customer Mesa, it will become a lot more competition and an opportunity to bring that pricing down. Also, I do believe the way the micro trenching is not, we don't like any time anybody penetrates through our asphalt, but it's a lot better than the techniques that are being used today. So, just to, when you compare, like, okay, I'd rather have a micro trench as opposed to ripping up the entire street.
Ms. Spilsbury. Are you done, Mr. Heredia?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just on that, didn't you mention when we had our individual meetings that some of those denser areas would be more attractive for them to start in anyways? So, that would help that issue, hopefully.
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmembers Spilsbury, you're exactly correct. It is, West Mesa tends to be the more dense than the rest of the city, which is the most attractive part of town. Density is kind of king here, so the more premises they can pass per mile, the greater chance of getting new customers. So, absolutely, they've all indicated that that would be of interest to start first.
Okay. And so, just to be clear, and for the public to be clear on, when we first started talking about getting fiber to the whole city, like, the first time I heard the mayor mention it, we talked about how it could be $500 million. So, what is the cost of this?
The cost is zero.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty amazing, right? Like, facilitating this opportunity for these private companies to come in and do it is exactly government's role in this, I think. Like, I think this is just incredible to see that we are legally and logistically and all the other ways making it possible for these companies to come in and do what they do best, and we stand out of the way, and we don't have to come up with the money for it. So, I just think that's a really important point to make on this. So, thank you for all of your work on this.
Absolutely.
Mr. Freeman.
Ian, thanks for making this conversation really exciting about fiber. I appreciate that. Micro trenching and everything else. How many providers do we have now for the city?
Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, well, if you want to talk about providers that are serving most of the city, we have two major incumbents today. There are a host of others, other providers. Those are providers that have facilities in the ground. I mean, you could talk about cellular carriers. I don't know all of the maybe smaller providers that are in the number. I could get that.
But overall, we have two providers.
Two, two citywide legacy providers that are providing service, correct?
Well, I think just from the conversation, this really helps it, this become affordable for households that need Internet and other technology like this. I think this is wonderful. So, I'm all in.
Thank you. Well, we'll look forward to, and it's on the consent agenda right now, and maybe we'll leave it on, or we might just take another opportunity to highlight it, but we'll decide that sometime before the 11th. But this is already attracting national attention. Like I say, this is, there are folks that follow this industry closely that are already writing stories about this, so we might, we're going to be hearing from people across the country that are going to want to know how we pulled this off, so.
And we'll just be adding an additional carrier, as Ian mentioned, so a third wire will be included. They're not on the current draft, but they'll be on the final.
That's great. Good job, Ian, and thank you, Travis. Thank you, everyone else who's worked really for many months on getting us to this point.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Brady, other, I know Mr. Freeman has questions about the agenda on the 11th, but what?
Well, we do need to cover 5G, and then what's already posted for the study session K and L, so we have presentations for all of those also.
Okay. Should we skip to, because it's on the agenda, the New Leaf issue, what's?
Yeah, 5G is not included in that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Let's hear more about 5G, then. This is the Helemann House agreement. Natalie?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear this out. On July 11th, on the consent agenda, we're going to be asking you to approve a project that we call the Helemann House. This is part of the $25 million in ARPA dollars that were set aside for homeless-related services. So, basically, this particular project will help us fill in some gap for the bridge to housing. These are going to be individuals that have either graduated from the East Valley Men's Center, or from off-the-streets, or from other programs, and they're showing success in their recovery. They're showing that they can hold down a job, they're showing that they can stay sober, and that they're really making good effort in their recovery path. This is the Helemann property. It is on University and just to the west of Stapley Road. You'll see, I think you guys know about an electrical facility that's right there at the corner. It's these two houses right here. Basically, what it will do and be is 12 rooms for transitional bridge housing. We are asking you to approve a 2.5-year contract with a New Leaf for this project. It's from ARPA dollars. It is an eligible expense for homeless support programs. New Leaf anticipates serving approximately 250 people during that time. The average stay is about 68 days, but the maximum stay would be 90. And what we will do is make sure we're connecting these individuals to all sorts of services that we're already investing in, like the Workforce Center at Mesa, making sure they have a housing stability plan, helping them with financial management, making sure the job that they have, they're setting aside dollars, so that when they do move into an apartment, they have some funding to help them. And then, of course, connecting them to vouchers and rent assistance. If this is approved by council on the 11th, the New Leaf will start pulling that whole campus together and do some startup work this summer, and then, in the fall, we'll be implementing it fully. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Spilsbury?
I'll just ask a kind of a general question. Do we keep track of, like, I'm sure we do, but how much money we put into these programs times are divided by how many people we help, and like, what would be an average amount of money we spend per person? Or is it, I mean, I know each person has a different story and different circumstances, and so, I know it's all, probably all over the place, but.
Absolutely. Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, for the Off-the-Streets program, we spend an average of about $10,000 per person, and so, we were looking at that number when considering this one, and it's right about the same.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was kind of figuring, is it looked like it was about $10,000 per person? And so, if their average day is 60 to 90 days, and then the resources providing for them and stuff, just how it compared to our other programs? So, and the average day at the Off-the-Streets program, is that it?
It's an average of about $10,000, but it's really, you know, goes between $10,000 and $20,000.
Okay.
You know, it kind of, like you said, there's a rare, a big variety based on a person's needs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Luna?
No, I just want to let you know that I'm going to be in support of this. Mike and his crew do an outstanding job, and I'm sure they continue doing that. They've been a great agency for the city of Mesa. They continue to do a really good job serving our community, so I would be in support of that.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Spilsbury?
Sorry, I forgot. So, did you say, is this, is this just men?
Yes.
Or this is, okay, so this is just men? And so, I know, talking to people about the Off-the-Streets program, I know we're in need of more bridge housing. So, is this just another step in that goal of providing more bridge housing so that they can get out of the hotel rooms into somewhere else?
It's exactly correct. If you look at the Housing Path to Recovery, if they started the Off-the-Streets, we could maybe get them to the East Valley Men's Shelter, and then, they're showing success in all of these things, then we get them to this bridge housing while they're shopping for vouchers and rent assistance.
And as far as, like, percentage of the people, whether it's like veterans, or single men, or single moms with kids, or elderly people, like, we have percentages of where the needs are the most for bridge housing?
I don't, Mayor, Councilmember Spilsbury, I don't have an exact number for the bridge housing. I just know that it's one of the areas that we struggle with the most right now.
The men, the single men?
Men in homelessness represent the large majority of homeless, and so, that's why the East Valley Men's Center is here, and we focus there. We like this idea because, well, first of all, a New Leaf owns it, and they then can use this as bridge housing for their center.
Okay.
And council members know that a New Leaf has also given us a proposal to actually build transitional housing on their lot, their existing one. So, this actually gives us a bridge between now and when that new housing goes into place.
And I, New Leaf does a great job, and I obviously care about men that are homeless as well, but I'm very concerned about the more vulnerable homeless, which to me would be elderly, veterans, single moms, families, kids, right? So, a single woman, so those are more vulnerable communities typically than men, so I just want to make sure that we are putting money into bridge housing for those.
But typically, there are more resources available for those groups.
For those groups, okay.
Through, say, the family and others.
Great. Yeah, okay.
To me, this demonstrates the beauty of this Housing Path to Recovery, the city's strategic plan, where we, there's a, you know, you go from transit, we started at a point, and then we transition people, and we provide services, and the ultimate goal is self-reliance. And the beauty of Natalie being the architect and creating the graphic here is, we realize that there's a hole in our safety net, because we've got the emergency housing, we've got, but this is what we, the missing part of the equation. So, I think.
It's our weakest link by far. I mean, we talk about Mary placing all the vouchers in the community and helping people with rental assistance to keep them housed, and we've got millions of dollars for that, but this is the one place where we just, making that connection has been difficult, so.
Yeah, and it gives us the ability to, while these people are shopping for housing, they're not taking up space at the shelter or at off-the-street, so we can continue using our facilities and our resources as efficiently as possible.
Mr. Freeman.
So, Natalie, I have a question. Have the neighborhoods been notified of this change in housing? Is there any requirement for that?
The neighborhood.
Because we share, you know, two different council districts here, we may hear some chatter from neighborhoods about what's happening.
There has not been any kind of a direct mailer or meetings for neighborhoods in the city. This has just been, this has gone through the normal process that we have of getting it out.
There's no zoning change or use change.
On the agenda, no zoning change, no, yeah.
But what is it currently being used for, these buildings?
Today, it's empty.
It's empty?
Yeah, I think.
I mean, I drive by it quite often.
I think Mike Hughes, he's here, and he could talk a little bit more about it, but I think the last time that they had it in use was for teen services. And so, this has been an asset they've had for a very long time, and they've used for different applications. So, it's not a new site coming on, it's just a new use at that site.
So, these monies will help with the upgrade of the building to allow this bridge housing to.
And for operation for two and a half years.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And New Leaf has been using these facilities for similar purposes for many years, so I don't think that, it's not a change in the type of use at that facility.
Correct.
Great. Other questions on this item? All right, thank you. So, this is on for the consent agenda for the 11th.
That's right.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Hughes, for being here. Mr. Brady, what other?
Don't send Mr. Hughes away too quickly. Why don't we just jump, I mean, if we're done, if we have other questions, say, agenda, let's do that, and then go to the study session item. They'll cover items 5K and 5L.
Great, thank you. Council, any other questions on July 11th's agenda?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
No, no, I was.
So, I want to discuss 7A with Nana. I mean, we have, we're going to, this is a council use permit for a storage facility, RV and boat storage, and the applicant in the beginning put in a single-story application to put in the storage facility. Now, they want to change that into a two-story. I know we've had discussion on that about council, about what is the right changes for these type of intersections. So, Nana, maybe you can explain a little bit here, and maybe what may happen?
Sure, Mayor and Council. So, when this application actually was approved, the zoning designation on the properties, general commercial, at that time, the use was allowed by right, and because of the proliferation of mini storages around the whole city, council actually had approved a tax amendment in 20, I think, two years ago, where now, such uses in the current zoning designation requires a council use permit. But because this application had been approved prior to the tax amendment, they were approved for one story, which I think overall, the total square footage was 51,000. And so, they came back, and the original approval was for one story, but now, they wanted to basically build two stories, which now require the council use permit because of the zoning change. And the reason why staff is supporting this, where in the current requirements, we probably would not have supported it, is because they already have the approval for one story, and so, we are supporting it, because as they build two stories, it maximizes the site, and it gives us the opportunity to also basically say no to the other locations that are going to be coming in, because we, as much as we acknowledge that mini storages has a place, we also want to make sure that the prime real estate, commercial real estate is not being taken for such uses, because you really don't need that street frontages and all that for this type of uses. So, that's why staff is recommending approval, because it's basically maximizing the current space that has already been approved.
Yeah, and I think for further discussion, you know, what I struggle with is the lateness of the approval of the second story, and whether we want to do that or not. But with that said, you know, I'm going to support it for right now, but I just don't want to set a precedent for other builders or developers to say, well, if I came in and did, got approval for the first story, and then add a second story to it, I think presents a conundrum for us.
Should it go back to P and Z?
No.
P and Z, approval of two?
It did, yes, they already went to P and Z.
It's already P and Z. All right. So, right now, we'll let it stand on the consent agenda?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Before we leave the 11th of July, any other questions, council? Mr. Brady, it's 5:48. Do we have time to listen, I mean, to do both 2A and 2B?
Hold on.
One is approving the audit plan. I know the audit committee.
Mr. Joe, Mr. Otter, can you wait a week? Will you be here? Okay. Can we do 2B, though? I think you'd be good to do that.
Yes, okay, thank you. Item 2B is a presentation on the transfer of city-owned properties purchased with a Community Development Block grant fund, and to discuss and provide a recommended, a recommendation related to a new lease request to transfer the ownership of two residential properties. Ruth and Michelle, good to have you with us.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Just give Ruth a moment here to pull up the presentation. Hmm. God, isn't it shite. Just. Here. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Ruth Giesi here, Community Services Director, and with me, next to me, is Michelle Albanese, our Housing and Community Development Director. Michael Hughes is also available for questions, Director of New Leaf, in the event you have questions of him. Today, we will be discussing and seeking council approval for the transfer of two city-owned properties. These properties were purchased with federally allocated CDBG grant funding, and it was, a New Leaf has been in these properties for some time, and we, if direction is given to transfer the property, then we do have, as indicated, we do have resolution. do have resolutions, agendas on consent agenda for July 11. And with that, I will turn it over to Michelle.
Thank you, Ruth. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm going to provide just a quick background on the history of the properties here. And in 2016, a New Leaf had requested to transfer some of the properties that they were leasing from the city. In the properties, they are providing programs and services to the community. These were originally purchased with CDBG funds, Community Development Block grant funds, as Ruth had mentioned. At the time of a New Leaf's request, the city had generally transferred properties in accordance to HUD's regulations, which is Housing and Urban Development, but staff were then directed to formalize the practice into a policy and procedure on how to transfer property to nonprofit agencies. The policy was developed in accordance with regulations and requirements, and they include a minimum of 10 years of the nonprofit providing CDBG-eligible services at the leased property. Also, submittal of a formal request by the nonprofit agency, of which New Leaf has done, to transfer the property with the intent to continue providing eligible services. A 30-day public comment period, if there's going to be a change of use, which has been completed, that was done in December of 2020, and final consultation with HUD. City Council had approved the policy in the summer of 2017. And just a quick note, a New Leaf has occupied both of these properties, so the main property since 1996, and the university property since 2007, providing the programs and services to the community. In December of 2019, staff had sought direction from the Community and Cultural Development Committee on the request for the three properties. And if you recall, we presented in January of 2020 to City Council, and they did approve the request for the Hobson property to be transferred. However, at that time, it was requested of staff to provide additional information on both the main and university properties, which included the current market value, an option of a property exchange for the property they're leasing, and another city-owned property, as well as any funding considerations and costs. On May 2nd, staff presented to the Community and Cultural Development Committee, and presented the information that was requested by City Council, and the committee recommended bringing these two properties again back to City Council for approval. So we'll move on quickly to the main property. And as requested by City Council, staff researched the current market value of the properties that are similar to the main and university properties. So for main, the property was estimated at 300,000 to 325,000, which is an increase of approximately 134,000 to 159,000 since 2017. But currently, as of today, the fair market value is approximately $247,000. This is due to the fluctuation in the market, and so we would have to really confirm with an appraisal. The university property, as of May 2022, was approximately 500,000, which would have been an increase since the 2017 appraisal of approximately 150,000 to 210,000. But again, as of today, the market value is approximately 390,000. Staff had identified three options that were presented to the Community and Cultural Development Committee, and these are brought to you today for consideration. The first option being to sell the main property and university properties at current fair market value. This could trigger displacement, because they are occupied by New Leaf, which could in turn cost additional funds to the city, and return funds to the Community Development Block Grant line of credit. So anytime we sell the property outright, and it's not going to be used for an eligible service, that money has to go directly back to the CDBG line of credit, and then those funds would be reprogrammed at additional, another time for additional services. If this were the option, there would be no further restrictions on the property, and then a New Leaf could possibly identify other properties they would be interested in, and put in a funding application through the next funding round. For option number two, this would be the city would transfer both of the properties subject to HUD requirements of any continued use period. Legally, the property ownership would transfer to a New Leaf, subject to any requirements, and a deed would be used, and any continued use requirements would also secure the property if required by HUD. Staff have been in consultation with HUD, and recent communication indicates that the continued use period may have already been met, so there would not necessarily be any additional restrictions on the property. And we are continuing to confirm that. And if this option were chosen, a New Leaf would continue to maintain the property and provide eligible programs and services to the community. Staff recommends option two for City Council consideration. And the last option we have is to transfer, I'm sorry, is to continue leasing the main property and university property to a New Leaf. The city would continue to own those properties. We would just continue the lease agreement, and a New Leaf would be responsible for any of the maintenance and repairs as they have been to date. And a New Leaf would continue to comply with the CDBG-eligible program requirements. So this transfer is recommended by city staff, and it meets the City Council-approved criteria for the disposition of city property. And both transfers will be on consent for the agenda on July 11. And if City Council does approve those consent items, there are several steps that are involved in the legal property transfer. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ladies. Questions on this item? Mr. Freeman?
So then, would we consider a motion for one of the options, is what you're telling us, to proceed, whether to transfer, sell, or continue the option lease? Is that what we would do?
Right now, the item-
On the consent agenda, the consent.
For option two. Is that already set for option two?
Correct, correct.
So we've made the assumption, we've given you the recommended. Yeah, we're just showing you what other things we considered, but what's on the agenda for the 11th is option two.
Is option two-
Correct.
For approval. Okay. That's all I have.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I think there might have been a typo in that option number two on, I think it was the second bullet point, it said that the city would continue to own the property. I think actually, the property would be transferred. I mean, that's what it says in the beginning, so that was just, obviously, if we're transferring the ownership of the property, that the ownership won't be still held by the city. Thank you. I support going forward with the way it's agendized right now for option two. I think, again, it's probably good to remind ourselves, this, that these are not investment properties. You know, we're not in, we're not trying to make money on real estate.
It wasn't our money, anyway.
It's not, exactly. This is HUD money that was given to us to be used for this purpose, and if we sell it, that money needs to, you know, we just complicate life, because we just have to find other ways to use this money for the same purpose, so. And a New Leaf has been a great partner for decades on these properties, and I think it makes sense to transfer it into their hands, so it can be on their balance sheet and help them with their financial goals. And they've been great stewards of these properties, maintaining them well, and they're providing critical services in these properties for our community. So it makes sense to me, and I'm happy to be supportive. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes, well, moving on then for the remainder of this meeting, item three is the current events and conferences attended. Counsel, anything you'd like to share with us? Mr. Luna?
Just really quick, we had a great experience yesterday at the naturalization ceremony held at the Mesa Convention Center, where I think there were 75 individuals that became U.S. citizens. So, you know, it was an honor to be there and to celebrate the citizenship of these individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. If you haven't done that, I'll keep reiterating, this is a great thing to do on the 4th of July. It's the most patriotic feeling you'll have of the whole holiday. Vice Mayor?
Yes, last Thursday, many of us were, went to cahoots for the ribbon cutting at Benedictine University on the second floor there. It was well-attended, so many members of the community. I'm so, I'm so happy to welcome them to the Mesa community officially. They've been interwoven and working with us through technical assistance and other things in our community, but now they officially have their space, and they have co-working spaces as well as workshops. It's a great place to collaborate and learn about entrepreneurship and build those business plans. It's key to our innovation district, and I'm glad to have them here. I also, after that, attended the National League of Cities Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources meeting. I'm on that board. And we discussed the Department of Energy is, will be allocating some grants to cities, some community block grants, at least $75,000 will be the minimum. I don't know what to expect for Mesa, but those will be used for renewable energy projects. I'm happy to hear about that. And of course, we had the Celebration of Freedom yesterday. Councilmember Freeman and I were judges in the car show. There was a lot of cars there. The music was excellent at the, and fireworks were spectacular. I'm glad that our community, so many people in the community joined us. It was a great celebration. And I don't know, I think there was something else, but that's good.
Thank you. I'll just, again, thank you to all the folks who worked so hard to put on that 4th of July celebration yesterday. There were tens of thousands of people there, and I was just struck by what a great, I'm grateful that the city extended the effort to make that happen, because it, really, a lot of people took advantage of it, and it was a wonderful program. I'll just add, I think many of you are starting to sign up to be part of the Safety Services Hydration Run. I went on that this morning. This is a great opportunity. You're going to get to go, and maybe, maybe I'm the last one, I don't know, but have you done this?
I'm going to.
So we've got a lot of really hard-working city employees that are out, you know, in the hot weather, and so our Safety Services folks pull up with drinks, water, and Gatorade, and some salty snacks, just to kind of help these folks be healthy, you know, during this extreme, the extreme weather that they're working, doing, performing these essential services in, so.
How do we say?
What's that?
How do we say that?
Your assistant, I think, probably already has.
Okay.
Because Safety Services put out a call to the council to participate in this, and I'm just going to encourage you to do it. It was-
We can pull up, make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll sign you up for about 2 o'clock on an afternoon.
We went very early in the morning this morning. But it's great to see these hard-working people doing these essential jobs, and to express your appreciation for that. Anything else under current events you'd like to share with us? All right, Mr. Brady, remind us again how we're going to wind things down this morning.
Okay. Everybody will show up on the July 11th, Monday. We'll finish off before the break. We'll probably have another early start. We have, we do still have a few items we need to bring to your attention that are not on the agenda that we want to review with you before the council meeting. So, and then the 11th will be our last meeting until we return on August 18.
Thank you very much. That concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Vice Mayor. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned, and we will immediately go upstairs for the formal council meeting.